Good evening, everyone. Good evening, thanks for joining us. I'm Dan Bates, President and CEO, Greater Hamilton Chamber of Commerce. We thank you for joining us tonight for the City Council Candidates Forum. Tonight, we will be introducing the candidates, and then we will go through a rotation of questions for them to answer. They have received the questions ahead of time. If there is time, we do have surprise questions at the end that they did not have a chance to prepare for. Special thank you to TV Hamilton for covering this tonight, and a special thank you for Miami Regional Downtown for hosting this and being a partner in this event. So let's get started. Let's meet the candidates. Andrew Khan is vying for a position to serve on City Council and is employed at Cincinnati Financial Corporation, where he has built his nearly 33-year career. He lives in Lindenwald with his wife and daughter, where he enjoys reading and sitting by a campfire. He also enjoys attending Renaissance festivals. Carla Fear, born and raised in Hamilton, is currently serving on City Council and has a history of community involvement and is active on Hamilton City Ordinance Review Committee, Butler County Courthouse Restoration Committee, Rediscover Hamilton Board Member, St. Peter and Chain's Parish Council President. Carla is married and has three grown children. Eric Pullman is currently on City Council, is a former Hamilton business owner of 22 years. Eric Pullman dedicated his efforts supporting growth of the community through volunteerism and various committee groups. He has served as Vice Mayor, Council Member, businessman, philanthropist, and family man in Hamilton. Susan Vaughn is currently serving on City Council. She is on multiple boards and commissions, including OKI Regional Council of Executive Boards, Seventeen Strong Advisory Board, Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Liaison, Ordinance Review Commission, Hamilton Vision Commission, Community Foundation Board Member, Parishute Board Member, and Miami University Federal Credit Union Board Member. So now you have met the candidates. We're going to start with our first question. Andrew, we will start with you. What is the most important role of City Council? And describe any previous board or strategic leadership experience and what you bring to the strategic planning and policymaking process. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Susan. We're right to the questions. I'm supposed to give them a chance to introduce themselves. So we'll still start with you, Andrew. You have one minute for an opening statement.
Thanks, Dan. I want to say thank you to Miami University Downtown for hosting tonight's City Council Forum, TV Hamilton for broadcasting, the Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring tonight's event, and of course, the citizens of Hamilton for being here tonight, and those watching online. My name is Andrew Khan, and I'm running for Hamilton City Council. Hamilton gave my parents a place to call home on Allen Avenue in Lindenwald in 1951. Then they moved to what my mom called her dream home on Pleasant Avenue, and were there until I was four, then we moved away. I always kept my eye on Hamilton because it was home. When I had the opportunity, I moved back to Hamilton in 2016 and became a youth pastor at the same church in Lindenwald that I grew up in, where I met my now-wife and moved back to Lindenwald around the corner from my childhood house. I am running for City Council because Hamilton has been great to my family. As a member of council, I will advocate and support good businesses and economic development, and I will be visible around town, on both sides of the river, so I can continue to be loyal to Hamilton's future.
Carla?
Hello to everyone out in the crowd, I've got to keep this up, and to those of you on TV Hamilton. I would also like to thank the Chamber, TV Hamilton, and Miami Hamilton for hosting us tonight, and I appreciate the opportunity to bring our comments to the citizens. I am Carla Fear. I was elected to City Council in 2008. My priority has always been to give the most service I can to Hamiltonians, and I believe that my skills, knowledge, and experience can continue to promote Hamilton's quality of life.
Think I got this? No, I got it. It doesn't move much. Hi, I'm Eric Pullman, and I want to thank Dan Bates and the Greater Hamilton Chamber of Commerce, TV Hamilton, and the Miami Downtown for hosting this year's Candidate Forum. I've had the honor to serve the citizens of our great city for the past four years. Hamilton has made a major transformation over the last 10 years, and I look forward to keeping the momentum going with the current council for the next four years and beyond.
Thank you. Good evening, and thanks to everyone again who made this all possible. I think it's really important that the city have an opportunity to see the candidates and to make a good decision on Election Day. So my first four years on City Council have really flown by. It's really hard to believe. It's been extremely rewarding. I also feel as though I'm still just figuring it all out. I retired from Miami five years ago, and at that time, I had been there 32 years, and I knew that I wanted to give back in some way. And I think I found my niche when I ran for City Council and was elected. I want to thank my family, who has certainly supported me throughout, my husband John, my daughter Liz, my son-in-law Brad, and my son Patrick. Our granddaughter Lily would have been here, she's a freshman at OSU, and our grandsons in California. But I just want to say thanks to everyone. I truly look forward to sharing with you the experiences I've had on City Council and how I believe I can continue to be an asset for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. If you could pass the microphone to Carla. Carla, we will begin with you, and I'll repeat the first question. What is the most important role of City Council? And describe any previous board or strategic leadership experience and what you bring to the strategic planning and policymaking process.
I believe the most important role for City Council is connecting with citizens. And we should be ambassadors for them. We should be able to be the ones that can answer the questions that they have, because they don't know everything that's going on. And rather than leaving them to reading comments on Facebook that's going to tell them what it is, or talking to someone else that really doesn't have an idea, I think that it is very, very important that we have this connection. In regards to strategic planning, I've had the privilege to serve on some outstanding boards, the YWCA Board of Directors, Vision 2020, and Baden High School. And at that time, it's the first time I really went through strategic planning. So when I got on City Council and we started it, I knew what it was about, and I knew how important it was, because a strategic plan is a working document that people mutually agree on, and then we set a course for the direction we're going in. And that is something that all citizens need to know so that they can follow along with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
I think the most important role of City Council is to represent the community and make decisions that impact the city. I want to tell a little bit about myself. I'm a former business owner for 22 years, 2016 Greater Hamilton Chamber of Commerce Business Person of the Year, former National Automotive Business Coach for Elite 360 Program based out of San Diego, California. I started my career with the city as a past Board of Zoning Appeals member. I was the past president, coach, and founder of the Butler County Challenger Baseball for Individuals with Special Needs. I coach for the Butler County Special Olympics still. Served two years as a Vice Mayor. Currently, I'm on the BCTID, which is the Butler County Transportation Improvement District. I'm a board member for SELF, which supports and encourages low-income families. I'm on the Board of, the Voting Board of CIC, Community Improvement Corporation for the City of Hamilton. I'm also a board member of the Fairfield Township JED, which stands for the Joint Economic Development District. I'm on the City Finance Committee. I'm an alternate on the ADRB, the Architectural Design Review Board, and I'm a board member on the new Ross JED Joint Economic Development District. Also, I'm on the Historic Train Depot Committee, and this shows that I am, that I'm involved, and I understand finance, policymaking, procedures, and I'm a proven leader.
Thank you. Susan?
Thank you. So I guess I walk of some of what they said, but I do believe that the most important role of City Council is to represent the best interest of the residents of Hamilton, and that's in all aspects of government, as is stated by our city charter. This includes really critical areas, such as public safety, finance, economic development, and that's just to name a few. As an administrator at Miami University, I spent 23 years, my primary responsibility was collaborating on policy development, policy implementation, excuse me, related to public safety, housing, quality of life on campus, and in the community of Oxford. As a councilwoman, I have continued to be a collaborator, who researches the issues, listens to others, and acts in the best interest of all. I currently serve on numerous boards, commissions, and committees, and after all these years, I still continue to hone my skills of being a good listener and a communicator. I do my homework in preparation for meetings, and I don't hesitate to ask questions when I don't fully understand an issue at hand. I believe my experience, my service, has certainly benefited me as a council member, and I continue to grow and learn. Thank you.
Okay, Andrew, please pass the mic to Andrew.
Thank you. The answer to this question, I believe, is in the question itself. The most important role of City Council, yes, it's the citizens, but it's also strategic planning and policymaking. The success of the city is dependent on City Council making the correct planning decisions, such as which businesses would be a good fit, which ones would not, which projects should council allot funds to. All these types of decisions are critical to the future of Hamilton. When elected, I will not shy away from asking the tough questions to make sure that the decisions we are considering will be the right ones for the city, because at the end of the day, we are serving the city and its citizens and must answer to them. The other important role of council is policymaking, good policymaking, which is outlined in Section 3.01 of the city charter. Every ordinance, resolution, and legislative action the council makes and/or enacts must be for the betterment of the city. When elected, before I cast my vote on policy, I will do my due diligence and study, read, and be informed on the issue before council, so I can cast my vote properly with the residents in mind. For almost 33 years now, I have worked at Cincinnati Financial Corporation, and in that time, I had been involved in numerous projects where we had to brainstorm and strategize to come up with a plan to get the job done or meet a goal. Also, my 15-plus years as a youth pastor, policymaking was a crucial task in my role as a leader. We had to create policies to govern every area of the ministry. Likewise, as past president of the Fairfield High School Alumni Association, I discovered a membership role when the database was severely deficient and implemented a plan correct. I believe the combination of these experiences and my desire to serve will benefit the city as a member of council.
Thank you. Please pass the microphone to Eric. Next question. Describe your platform and what is the number-one priority of your term.
Thank you, Dan. I think this is probably, excuse me, kind of a platform and a vision statement for me, that the City of Hamilton will continue to increase its diverse population and culture. Through sound leadership and city management, we can continue to invite new business and strengthen our economic development. Hamilton will be a city with a strong emphasis on public safety and community engagement. We will see an increase in the maintenance and development of infrastructures to support our continued growth as a city. So basically, my main, my main goal is to have Hamilton that's going to be a city with a strong emphasis on public safety and community engagement.
Susan?
Thank you. Four years ago, when I ran for council, I said my number-one priority would be actively engaging with the residents of our community, and I believe I've done that. I've actively been involved with Seventeen Strong. Four years ago, prior to even being on council, I was attending their meetings and learning about each of our 17 neighborhoods in the city. I've learned from some of the best, Kathy Klink, Brandon Sarber in the Department of Neighborhoods, Frank Downey. These are folks who are passionate about their neighborhoods, and I've learned from them. We work collaboratively with residents, and I hear from them, what are their needs? What do they want? It's not what is dictated from the top down, it really starts from the bottom up. Engaging with the residents in the neighborhoods has helped me really understand the bigger issues, and these issues run the gamut, including homelessness, blight, drugs, traffic, parking, lack of recreation, all of the things that, yes, we know about, but until you're there with them in their neighborhood, you truly don't know. So it's so impactful when you sit, talk with the people, and then come back and policies are made. We do it for them, and I think that's critical to the success of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Pass the microphone to Andrew.
Thank you. My platform is simple: support good economic development in Hamilton, support infrastructure projects, and be visible in the community. Economic development is crucial to the growth and success to the City of Hamilton, and is number-one priority for me in my first term on council. As a city, we must strive to be attractive to potential companies that are looking to relocate or expand their business here, and then make that process as simple as possible for them, so they can begin creating new jobs for Hamilton and bring in more income for the city. Infrastructure is always an important aspect to the success and future of the city. In my opinion, good infrastructure is a key component to the economic growth that I just mentioned. In fact, the two should work and complement each other, and when the results are not coming quickly as we hope, it's up to us as leaders to ask the tough questions. What can we do different? What can we change? What can we try? Finally, I believe it's important to be visible in and around the community. Any opportunity that is available for us to interact with the citizens of Hamilton should be welcomed. I enjoy talking to the residents and listening to their concerns and hearing their stories. We have great people here, and I want to have a chance to interact with as many of them as possible. By doing these three things, relationships will be created and bonds will be formed, which will strengthen the city, improve the quality of life for the residents, and make Hamilton a great place to be.
My platform sounds like a broken record, because I've said the same thing for 16 years of what I think is one of the most important things. And where we are making great progress, I think that two of our pressing problems are hand in hand, and that is strengthening our neighborhoods and the overall appearance of our city. I'm the oldest of five girls, and my dad always used to say, "There's nobody more important in this house than the people that live here, and if we can't keep things clean for ourselves, let other people see how we live." And I believe that with the city, too. We can't just clean up because there is a parade coming to town or a festival coming to town. We never know when that, that business is going to come to town, just to take a peek of what's going on up here. So we need to have our ordinance in places, so that we can make sure that we are keeping it as clean and bright as we can. The neighborhoods are a cornerstone of our community, and Seventeen Strong Initiative has brought that to light. They have helped us identify what is unique in each neighborhood, which leads to the diversity, which is one of our questions also, is that we do have a very diverse city, and we do have a lot of neighborhoods of the seventeen where we do have leaders in them, but we do need to have more people step up and help create their own neighborhood, not us, of how they'd like to see it go. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we will start with Susan. What are the best things Hamilton has to offer, and how would your leadership involvement capitalize on those features or resources in the future?
Great. Thanks, Dan. Where do I start? So I'm going to start back in the 1950s and 60s, and I'll do it in less than 90 seconds. Yes, that's when I was growing up in Hamilton, and I know you all find that hard to believe, but that's true. I remember the thriving downtown Hamilton. I remember riding the bus with my mom downtown, shopping all day at Wilmer's, at Martin's, at Woolworth's, and then later on at Elder Beerman. The 70s and 80s, the thriving Main Street. Again, Main Street had the shops. I worked in one for over 20 years. I started in high school at Maryland's on Main, at Main and D Street, and I learned so much from that experience. But as we all know, that hasn't been the case for all of the years since then. Hamilton has history, and I'm proud of our history, once thriving and again thriving. I will say, Hamilton is back, and we all appreciate it in different ways. I remember it when. You may remember it from a whole different perspective, but however you remember it, look at where we are now. I think for all of us, we have a greater appreciation for what has happened in the past 10 to 12 years. For me, Hamilton has a lot to offer: vibrant downtown and Main Street, opportunities now for urban living, the numerous parks, recreation throughout the city, manufacturing, innovation, small businesses, restaurants, and entertainment. Great Miami River, one of our greatest assets, and I look forward to seeing improvements along there. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew?
Without a doubt, the best thing Hamilton has to offer are the people. Hamilton is unique, because even though we are a city of around 63,000, we have a small-town feel. I have traveled all over Hamilton, and there is one unifying, prevailing truth: the residents of Hamilton are second to none. From Lindenwald to Taff Place, Governor's Hill, from New London to Jefferson, and all areas in between, people love their neighborhoods and they love their city. To illustrate my point, on Celebrity Bartending Night during Hamilton's Hospitality Week, I was talking to a gentleman at the Casual Pint that I found out was from out of town. I had my campaign name tag on, and he introduced himself to me, said his name was Phil. I asked Phil if he was enjoying his stay in Hamilton, and this was his answer. He said, "Andrew, I have traveled from coast to coast, and I have yet to find people as welcoming, friendly, and as passionate about their hometown as people here in Hamilton." I simply responded to Phil, "I completely agree. Our residents are the best." As leaders, we must use the resources and means we currently have and develop new strategies to engage, encourage, and involve all our residents, to allow that passion, feel experienced, to shine for all to see. Another great feature Hamilton has is the downtown area. With Rivers Edge, Markham Park, the Door District, and retail in that area, there's an energy level that is almost tangible. In a word, Hamilton is alive. I would be remiss, however, if I didn't mention the great Miami River, what a treasure that is to our city. I am 100% in support of developing the area on both sides of the river to create one more opportunity for people to enjoy what their city has to offer.
Thank you, Carla, and may I remind the candidates, please watch the paddle. You have the 15-second reminder, and then when it's red, you have to stop.
Okay. Am I on to the next question?
Do you want me to repeat the question?
Oh, I'm sorry, no. Okay. Best things, yes, best things. I know the answer to this. I believe we have several tangible amenities that set us apart. We have our own utilities, which includes fiber optics and vast potential, or technology potential. Downtown, Main Street, and German Village have become a real hub for us, and the activity and businesses, entertainment, six separate business districts with opportunities for new startup. And we now have places where we can live, with Markham Apartments, and, thank you, Ian, with Markham Apartments. We have plenty of places that people come and live and can feel part of Hamilton. But one of the best things that I think Hamilton has to offer is a place to locate and grow a business. Our city administration, staff, and every department comes together and they work as a team. At a time when most municipalities were struggling with the reduction of state funds, we used that opportunity to develop new ideas and incentives to spur economic development. The City of Hamilton has sent a clear message that we are open for business every day in every way.
Thank you, Carla. Eric?
Just as Susan said, too, I said I've been through probably the good and bad of this town. We saw the good times, we've been through the real bad times, too, and I think right now, Hamilton offers a rich blend of history, culture, and economic potential. I think we're at our best time for our economic potential right now. My leadership has and will stay focused on economic development, community engagement, education, historic preservation, very important to me, and sustainability initiatives to capitalize on these assets for the city's future growth and prosperity.
Okay, thank you. Next question, we will start with Andrew. What are the biggest and most immediate challenges facing the City of Hamilton, and how can you impact city leadership on addressing those challenges?
Thank you. One of the challenges we face as a city, I believe, is citizen engagement. I have attended neighborhood meetings all over the city and participated in different neighborhood events over the last year, and it seems to me that the same group of residents are the ones that always show up and are involved. While I am thankful for that core group of individuals, to make a significant lasting difference in our city, we need input, involvement, and interaction from everyone. As city leadership, it is our responsibility to equip and empower that core group of volunteers and return them back to their streets, subdivisions, and neighborhoods, to remind their neighbors the importance of responding to a city survey, or taking part in a neighborhood cleanup, or attend a neighborhood meeting. We need everyone to get involved. One other challenge I think we face as a city is the issue of blight. Walking around the city, blight is a huge problem. Overgrown grass, junk in the front and backyards, and dilapidated homes are all concerns that we have here in Hamilton. As leaders, we must remind residents to report these nuisances through the 311 app, so the property departments can review the property and begin the cleanup process. In other words, we must be certain that we are enforcing the ordinances that are on the books. With all of that said, the bottom line is, it takes cooperation between the city and the community to address all these issues and challenges, to make Hamilton a better place to work, live, and play.
So I've already gone over how important, I think, neighborhoods are, blight, all that. But another concern that I do have is that we have tremendous growth, and with that is a tremendous responsibility to keep that growth in place. We have to make sure that, that we are not, we're not missing an opportunity with our new businesses that, that will keep them here. Those of us that were here 10, 12, 15 years ago, we know what it was like when all of the sudden Ohio Casualty left, Champion left, Beckett left. It left a tremendous void, and I give us a lot of credit for coming back from that. But we don't want that to happen again. We have great businesses coming to town, and we need to do everything we can to stay in touch with them, to make sure that they are happy and that we are meeting their needs. Thank you.
I'm trying to talk here, but, get out of my throat here. Okay. I looked at this, I don't know, this was a tougher question for me. I looked at this as, what do I hear from the citizens all the time? And I had to narrow it down to two, and some, you know, this, there's good points on both of you there, but I think homelessness and lack of mental health resources and infrastructure is probably the two biggest ones I always hear about. Unfortunately, we do have some problems with that that we work on every day. And as a council member, I continue and I will continue to advocate for resources and budgetary support for mental health services with both city and county involvement. Not just the city, we need the county to get involved, too, and the state. Anybody else would get involved. This can't be just Hamilton's venture. This has to be everybody involved. This is a problem worldwide. So, you know, believe it or not, other people do have bad streets, too, so it's, but, but everybody has homelessness and mental health problems. But we can't be the ones that do this on our own. We have to do this with, with state, city, county. We all have to be involved. Also, real quick, I will continue to also advocate for resources for budgetary support for infrastructure on a city, county, and state levels.
Thank you. Really, not in any order, but for me, the first priority is funding for public safety. If we don't have the funds for public safety, we don't have a city that people want to live in. Secondly, homelessness, drug, mental health issues, absolutely, those are issues that we are dealing with as a city right now. Infrastructure is also a very, very common complaint, and it's a major challenge for us. I'll address these quickly. With homelessness, mental health, drug issues, I'm happy to say that the county, the city, and surrounding areas are working together. I am on a homeless coalition. We are addressing this head-on. It's not an easy answer. As Eric said, we need federal-state help, because it's a national crisis we're facing. Secondly, with infrastructure. Our infrastructure is aging. We're an old city. We are paving our streets, and I think it's really important for everyone to understand, we don't want to pave a street and then the next year go in because the infrastructure has failed underground. So it takes money, it takes planning, and it takes time, and we are working on these. And absolutely, I think you heard, we agree, these are major challenges for our city. Good news is, our public safety has received funding. We are building a new justice center on Hanover Street. If you haven't been over there, go by. It's going to change the way we do things. We're getting funding for fire trucks and police equipment. Thank you.
Okay, next question, we'll start with Carla. Explain your assessment of diversity in Hamilton, and in what ways can the city's diversity be embraced for strategic planning and economic development?
I believe our neighborhoods are where the richness of our city's diversity stands out. And I think because of Seventeen Strong and Planned Hamilton, the uniqueness of each neighborhood is being identified and revealed. Working with the residents to establish a creative, resilient, collaborative community in every neighborhood would be the best economic development tool that we could give the city. city. But the city cannot and should not be the only one to create a strategic plan for each neighborhood. The people that live in there need to help come together and be a very active participant in creating the type of community that they want to live in. I strongly encourage every citizen to go to the city's website to read about 17 Strong. But the other part of our diversity is that we do try to learn from the past, and we do want to be understanding to people, and we do want to open up, and more people do come together as a group to be able to talk to people openly. I think that that is so huge with a lot of the events that we have downtown now and over at Markham Park. There are so many different entities that we're learning about, and that's what's important, is that we have to learn to appreciate and embrace other people and understand how they feel too, and the way that their lives are also. Thank you.
Hamilton has shared a rich history and cultural diversity within their 17 neighborhoods, I'll get it closer here. That makes Hamilton unique. To leverage this diversity for strategic planning and economic development, the city should always embrace inclusive policies, promote cultural awareness, invest in workforce development, support minority-owned businesses, and provide multilingual services, promote cultural tourism, and foster community engagement, which I believe we do quite, do very well with 17 Strong. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, what I call each neighborhood is, it has a unique personality. We have diversity in this city. Sometimes we don't see it because it's neighborhood to neighborhood, and if you don't go out and visit the neighborhoods, you don't necessarily see the diversity. But with that brings unique issues for them. And so what's important for the city to do is get to know the neighborhoods about the diversity, whether it's a small business that we need to support, or it's the people there, or it's a language barrier. Within our schools, they're doing a great job of really working within these unique communities and with the different personalities. As I said, as a representative of the people, it's so important for us to be engaged in those neighborhoods, get to know the personalities, and welcome them to the diverse group. As Carla mentioned, 17 Strong is one of those that brings people together. That's what we need to do. It isn't that we aren't diverse, we are diverse. We have to appreciate each other within those communities, get to know them, and be a part of it. And I will say, I learned a lot as I've been on city council. I am in every neighborhood, and I can't tell you any neighborhood that isn't welcoming for us, not as a city leader, but just as a citizen. They welcome, we welcome, newness, new people, and learning more about each other. Thank you.
Okay, Andrew, same question.
Thank you. Diversity can mean any number of things, race, gender, economic class, sexual orientation, age, just to name a few. And with that said, I believe Hamilton is rich in diversity, and everyone has a place in the community. Each person in these groupings I just mentioned brings something different to the table, and they have a unique perspective on issues and topics, and should be a part of all strategic planning and development in the city. As everybody has mentioned, 17 Strong is a great example of diversity in Hamilton. At any particular 17 Strong event, there are people participating from all neighborhoods, from all the groupings I mentioned earlier, all with one goal, to make Hamilton better. I've found that some of the best interactions and best discoveries I've had were because of the 17 Strong event, namely Garcia's Tacos over in the Jefferson neighborhood. I discovered those, those were fantastic. Hamilton has a Diversity and Inclusion Commission whose responsibility it is to study the barriers to diversity and to come up with solutions to tear down those barriers. However, the commission, as well as city council, needs feedback and involvement from the community to truly be diverse.
Okay, next question, we're going to start with Eric. What is your view on major developments such as the ongoing Spooky Nooka Champion Mill Project, SECA, and other expansions at Commerce Park, in downtown hospitality and residential projects, and how does that fit into your long-term vision for Hamilton?
First of all, I don't know if anybody's ever driven up to Enterprise Drive. If everybody in this town has driven up there, it's just remarkable what we have up there. We have 80 acres, we have Vinyl Max, we have SECA, we had, well, we had an old mill down here that was falling apart, and now we have Spooky Nook. Likely or not, it's a beautiful facility. So, I'm very excited about all these projects that we're bringing in. These various projects have provided the community with new revenue resources, local job opportunities, centrally-located activities to expand our community through the addition of new residents and local tourism. These projects help, these projects fit in my, into my vision, that they help promote my long-term vision of Hamilton economic growth and commercial development, and basically redevelopment of Hamilton. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Well, I absolutely support the major developments that have come to our community, and I'm extremely pleased with what we have now and what is to come. Spooky Nook, I don't think we have seen at all the impact that it will have economically and otherwise on our city. It has put us on the map. We're seeing growth and continued development in Commerce Park, the sale of the Cohen property across from Spooky Nook, where Crawford Hoying will bring a new level of development to Hamilton. That in turn will truly change the neighborhoods around it. I look forward to the Schuler-Benninghoffen Project in Lindenwald, and future retail hospitality venues along Pleasant Avenue. My continued vision for Hamilton is success for all of our businesses, large and small, continued improvements in our neighborhoods, and affordable housing, jobs for those who choose to make Hamilton their home. Without jobs, without affordable housing, without successful communities or businesses, we would not be a thriving Hamilton.
Thank you, Andrew.
I am in 100% support of major development in the city because future growth in Hamilton depends on it for two reasons. First, it brings good-paying jobs to Hamilton, which gives kids graduating from Hamilton High School or Baden High School an opportunity to enter the workforce and be a productive member of Hamilton. In addition, these new businesses give everyone in the community the opportunity to secure a better-paying job to better their family's situation. Second, when these businesses expand or build in Hamilton, it means additional income tax is created for the city. I mentioned this to a resident the other day, and their response was, "So what?" My reply was this, additional income tax is more money the city can allot to any number of projects and developments to contribute to our growth. Dan mentioned Spooky Nook earlier. I know a lot of people were cautious about the project, maybe still are, but the project has already begun paying dividends with other businesses, restaurants, and hotels opening simply because of the presence of Spooky Nook. We are once again an attractive area for development and business growth. Spooky Nook, 80 Acres, Third Eye Brewing, just to name a few, all of these have invested their resources here in Hamilton. And don't forget the small businesses, Pedals &amp; Wicks, Municipal Brew Works, True West Coffee, and Billy Yanks, all of these are thriving businesses that make Hamilton attractive. It makes me proud to say Hamilton is no longer a pass-through town on people's way to Fairfield or Westchester.
This question was asked four years ago, and I said the same thing that I'm going to say today, keep them coming. Projects don't just happen, they're there because there's a demand for them, and the result of our strategic planning, Hamilton is in high demand. The relationships that we've developed with people and businesses from outside of Hamilton has been astonishing and continues to grow. The people who are involved have a sense of co-ownership with Hamilton and its residents. With every new project we complete, we're transforming Hamilton into a more hospitable environment where people gather, come together, events are held where people want to live, work, and play.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Susan. Generally speaking, do you think the city is heading in the right direction? If yes, why? And if no, why not?
Absolutely, yes. Over the past 12 years, I think all of you have seen tremendous change. It's not because of city council. When I came on four years ago, I tell everyone, I was at the top of the wave. It has taken a lot of people to get us where we are today. I want to thank our city manager for the leadership that he brought to this town. I do not believe we would be here without his leadership. But he's only a piece of it. He may have the insight, foresight, but it's the people that work for him, with him, with us, that make this city what it is today. The people who work behind the scenes keep our city running, and I thank them, the executive leadership team, those who work day and night, and I know many of us don't even think about them until it snows and you need to get your car out, and the next morning you can, or the lights go out, and within a couple of hours, your utilities are fixed. These are the people that we need to thank, and we're heading in the right direction, and it takes more than a village. It takes a lot of people to make things like this happen. So we are absolutely heading in the right direction.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you. Without hesitation, the answer is a resounding yes. I think the city is heading in the right direction. Think back not too long ago, when we lost Moser Safe, Fisher Body, Champion Paper, and many other companies, all within a short period of time. Hamilton was decimated, and some people even thought we would never recover. But look where we are now. There are announcements almost weekly, it seems, of a new business opening in Hamilton. If you watched the State of the City address last week, our city manager Joshua Smith mentioned several new businesses that'll be opening just in the coming months. Each announcement generates excitement for the city and just reaffirms that Hamilton is alive and thriving and a great place for business growth. But it's not just new businesses. Sarah's House, Pedals &amp; Wicks, and Municipal Brew Works, just to name a couple, have opened a second location at Spooky Nook to complement their original locations. And let me say this, as a community, we need to celebrate and support all of our small businesses because they truly are the heart and soul of our city. The word about Hamilton is getting out, and folks are coming from all over to experience the renaissance and renewal that's happening here in Hamilton. It has now become a destination spot, a place for people to go and spend their time and their money.
Carla?
Well, this is one of those questions I wish I could have answered first instead of last, because I'm not going to be a doo-wop girl and just repeat everything they've said, which is all wonderful. But what I will add is that, yes, we are definitely heading in the right direction. We continue to make progress. When we begin a project, it's thought out, talked out, put into action, observed closely, and if we need to pivot during the process, we do. That's part of our success. We don't just stand by something because we said we're doing it. We monitor it. City administration, as Susan pointed out, they are on top of everything that's being done, and they monitor it so closely, and if they need to make a change, they make a change. That's what keeps us moving forward, and that's how we keep accumulating successes.
Thank you, Carla.
Well, absolutely, 100%. I don't think anybody here disagrees with that. And, you know, the thing is, Hamilton's becoming a destination. When was the last time you heard that? Hamilton's becoming a destination, the place to be. I'm going to disagree with Susan a little bit. It is because of council, and it was even before we got there. This council and the city management team, they just did a great job, they worked together. And it started, what, 12 years ago? So that's when Hamilton started becoming strong again. And although in council, we don't always share the same perspective, we are a great team that works together and accomplish rapid growth. And when I say destination, I was at one of the establishments, and I was there one night, there was three people there, well, there was a couple from Cincinnati, and there was a guy from Mason, and somebody else from Westchester, and I always ask them where they're from. Well, the couple from Cincinnati, they said they liked coming to Hamilton, but the couple from Cincinnati really impressed me because they said, "We come to Hamilton now because it's like the new over-the-rhin." And it's a neat place to come to, it's a great downtown. Where over-the-rhin, they felt, is not doing as good as it used to be, they really like coming to Hamilton. And that made me feel good, that they're coming to Hamilton from Cincinnati, I mean, before, you know, we went there. So now we got people coming in. It's a good feeling to have.
Okay, next question, we'll start with Andrew. Looking at the priorities identified in the updated Plan Hamilton, zoning changes and recently discussed priorities at council meetings over the last six months, what categories or ideas should receive the largest percentage of city funding and resources?
I think the easy answer to this question is roads. Our roads are in desperate need of repair, and when they're fixed, will enhance the attractiveness for business to invest in and families to move to Hamilton. But there's a couple of other things I want to talk about. And I know I sound like a broken record because I talked about this a few minutes ago, and that is continue investing in economic development, specifically along Route 4, Pleasant Avenue, and of course, Enterprise Park. That will, as Plan Hamilton says, enhance the quality of life in the city. As I mentioned, supporting small business growth should also be important. Help those small business owners, when growth is needed, find the ideal new location and make it as simple as possible for them to expand. The other category that should receive the largest percentage of resources are neighborhoods. I believe our neighborhoods are the crown jewel of Hamilton and needs every resource available to make them shine. Plan Hamilton talks about increasing homeownership in the city and mentions down payment assistance programs, along with some other programs, and I could not agree with this more. Increasing homeownership will give families an opportunity to plant their roots here and stay for generations to come.
I know I've talked about the importance of strengthening our neighborhoods, and I think 17 Strong has opened the door for Plan Hamilton, because 17 Strong got people on board with what's going on in the city and what's important. Plan Hamilton is a valuable tool, a living plan is what they refer to it, to plan ahead for the next 15 years. Everything that they have listed in there is important. One's not more important than the other. But the most important thing, I believe, is that citizens need to, when you are getting an email, or being on Facebook, or whatever you're invited, whenever you're invited to participate, input with Plan Hamilton, that is the best thing that you can do, because that's the only way that we really can hear what your thoughts are and how you'd like to be it. Just like when we had the street levy, the way that we reached out to the neighborhoods to find out what streets they thought needed to be done. And granted, it's not going as quickly as we hoped, but we have a plan, and it is happening, and it will continue to happen. So, that's what I think we need to focus on. Thank you.
You're right, because there's so many good things in the Plan Hamilton. It's a great guideline, community guideline, they're all very important, but since, basically you ask us to choose, I believe these are my top priorities, and I'm reading right from there, it's enhance the well-being of our residents and neighborhoods, that is investing in police and fire capital, which we are doing, clean up blighted properties, develop amenities like park, shopping district, and events. Those are very important. I agree with those 100%. And the second part of it is encourage development and redevelopment, seek expansion opportunities, invest in the urban core, and revitalize neighborhood business areas. Lindenwald, we're starting to do that in Lindenwald finally. I mean, and we work hard for that. That's, all these are very, everything, like you said, is very important in this plan, but without doing these two, to me, we're not going to get the, we're not going to get the income and the utilities in here to handle the rest of our other problems that we need to do. We have to stay with our neighborhoods, keep them strong, and I think we're doing a lot of, 17 Strong and the city's doing a lot of nice things for the neighborhoods right now. We just got to really stay strong with these two, in my opinion.
Thank you. I think Dan's point or comment in the beginning was, Plan Hamilton, you've been discussing this over the past six months in city council. I hope we're discussing it for the next six years, because it is just that, Plan Hamilton. We aren't going to go neighborhood by neighborhood and develop them. I mentioned Lindenwald, Schuler-Benninghoffen. That development has been in the work about three years. It's part of Plan Hamilton, where we'll have a vibrant Lindenwald again. The new East End that we've just approved, that development, that also is going to need attention. So prioritizing where the money goes, I don't think is as critical as understanding there is a plan. It is, as Carla said, a living document. That living document means you all have input. When there are surveys, please answer the surveys. Please tell us what you need in your neighborhood, because there's a plan, and this plan is short-term and long-term. Some things have been accomplished, others not. But trust that city council will do everything we need to do to thoroughly study it, to make sure that the money is being spent appropriately, and I have had my moments on council where we don't necessarily agree. And I have had my moments on council where we don't necessarily agree where money should go, but we do our best at evaluating and assessing and then dispersing the funds as needed.
Okay, thank you. The candidates have done a very good job of answering the next question already, so we're going to skip question nine and go to question 10. Carla, we'll start with you. If there were no budget or resource restraints, what would you advocate for as part of the city's leadership?
I generally don't like what-if questions. My kids did that to me all the time. But I would say, I have three areas. One, I would advocate to supply our police and fire departments with the added manpower and new equipment necessary to provide safe environment for the citizens. I would also allot monies to remove blights from neighborhoods. We've already heard how important that is. And if I could wave a magic wand, I would have all these streets repaired because we all, it's something every one of us experience. And when you actually go a different direction, not to go on a street, when you know in your mind, "That's a bad street, I'm not going that way," that's not a good thing. So I think those would be the three things, if money was no object, that I would advocate for.
Going to sound like a broken record here, but it's, boy, it would be a dream to have no budget constraints because we sit a lot of long hours talking about this, I know that. And I would envision Hamilton with a strong infrastructure, public safety, and resources for the mental health and homelessness. I think with an endless budget, that would just be a beautiful thing to cure. These are essential to creating a city that a person can love to live, work, and play in. So those were actually my three.
All right. I'm going to make you all a promise tonight. When I win the Powerball tonight, this is where the money is going to go. And I believe it's going to take a billion dollars or more to do all of these things that we want, but it's a big jackpot tonight. So, when I win, public safety is going to be my first expenditure. I believe the salaries, equipment, state-of-the-art facilities need funding, and I will say it over and over again, without public safety, we don't have a community. Funding for mental health and drug treatment is certainly a priority, though again, I echo what others have said, we need state and federal dollars to do this. But if I have the money, I'm going to put it where my mouth is and say, "We need to do that." Funding for education in Ohio is criminal. It's illegal, and we need to do better with our schools. I know what our teachers pull out of their pockets to help fund our schools. So, a billion dollars probably isn't going to fund all of the schools, but it would make a big dent in it in improving and helping our teachers. I don't like to see the fact that teachers are leaving because of their job, and so I believe we can use the money, if it were unlimited, to make a difference in our community.
Andrew.
Thank you. I love this question because it allows the city leaders to dream. First, if there were no budget or resource restraints at all, I would advocate partnering with the Boys and Girls Club of Hamilton and Chief Executive Officer Tommy John to create new places to go and new activities to do around town for our teenagers and kids. At a recent city council meeting, a few high school students came before council to discuss this very thing. They asked council if it was possible to create some places for teenagers to constructively socialize and hang out, and I'm looking forward to seeing what comes of that conversation. Just last week, I was talking to a young man named Patrick over here at Rotary Park. He was skateboarding, and I asked him about the skating community. He told me that the closest skating park was at Joyce Park and is in great shape. He would like to see, in his words, "A regulated skate park that is well-maintained, uses the right paint, and is convenient to both sides of the river." If there were no budget or resource restraints, we would remove or rehab all the blighted properties and buildings and structures all over town. We talked about that a couple of times tonight. And I would also ensure that our police, fire, and EMS have the absolute latest state-of-the-art equipment to make certain they can do their job to keep the citizens of Hamilton safe.
Thank you. The next question, we're going to start with Eric. If elected, how will your leadership on city council be noticeably impactful to the city of Hamilton, its businesses, and its community residents?
Well, first of all, you know that I'm definitely advocate for small business. That's what I did here in town, and Hamilton was good to me, and I still think we need to do all we can for small businesses. And I have, and I will continue to prioritize infrastructure improvement. We need our fiscal responsibility, public safety, education, while promoting diversity and long-term planning for the city's prosperity and well-being.
So, if reelected, you'll see no lapse in the work that I'm doing. I'm committed. This is a full-time job for me, although it's not a job. It's rewarding every day that I'm out on the streets and talking to people and engaging. I give credit to everyone, city council, again, our city leaders, and the citizens of Hamilton for the success we've seen here. The slogan for 17 Strong is "We is greater than me." So I will take itsy-bitsy credit for anything that I do, but to engage and be in the position of being on city council does give you that ability to be able to make change, and I will do that. I will be dedicated to making this, continuing to make this, our home. Home is where our heart is and where we all live, work, and play. And we all have to be in this together to make it our home. My vision for Hamilton is to look to the future while living in the present. We can't lose sight of what's to come down the road. It was just yesterday, it was the 50s, and I was downtown riding the bus with my mom, and here we are. And so we can't lose sight of that, and we have a great future for our city and for our young people that will next be the leaders.
You want me to repeat the question?
Sure.
Okay. If elected, how will your leadership on city council be noticeably impactful to the city of Hamilton, its businesses, and its community residents?
Thank you. When I'm elected, my leadership on city council will be impactful to all aspects of the city for a couple of reasons. First, I'll be a new face to city government. I'm not a politician. I've never held any city government office before. I've never been on any municipal boards or commissions. I don't have any political agenda or aspirations save this one. Are the decisions I'm making today in the best interest of the city of Hamilton, the business community, and its residents? Does my yes vote on this item improve the state of the city? Will my no vote protect and defend Hamilton, all of Hamilton? At the end of the day, that is what's important and what we as city council must ask ourselves. Am I either improving the city or am I protecting the city with my decision? And I will be held accountable to the residents because that's why we're on council. The second reason my leadership will be impactful to Hamilton is because as a new face, I will bring a fresh perspective to council. I believe that a different perspective will foster new ideas, new approaches to issues and concerns, and will be a catalyst for city council to think outside the box and get creative to solve problems for the city.
Carla.
I think my leadership is going to be proven at the ballot box because I've served for 16 years, and rather than to sit and tick off everything that we have been able to do successfully, I hope that people can see what I have done as one of the leaders of our city. I am a passionate leader. I care deeply about what I do. I know the importance of communicating, sharing, engaging, and working with people in order to connect with the community, and I think that that's what leadership is about. Thank you.
Okay, we have three surprise questions, but we're not going to have time for them tonight, so you guys can take a sigh of relief. We are going to go right to closing statements, and Susan, we will start with you.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to thank everyone for being here. For those of you who are here in the audience tonight, if you look around, you're going to see something that you may not see in other cities, and that is the fact that our mayor is here, council member Nab, vice mayor Ryan, and council member Lauer. They're all here because we're a team and we support each other. We've worked well together. I appreciate all their leadership when I came on board four years ago, wondering, "What the heck am I getting into?" Now I know, and I wouldn't change a thing. I appreciate all of you. As I look out in the audience, there are people that I've met over the past four years that I didn't know, and I am so glad I know you now because of the ways that we can work together. Back in the beginning, I said, for 32 years, I worked at Miami and Oxford, and as much as I wanted to be engaged in the city, in the community, I couldn't. Raising two kids, working a job that was 12 hours a day, it wasn't possible. But I will tell you now, the reward is everything that everyone gives back to us. So thank you for giving me this opportunity to be on council. I would love to serve another term and be involved and to meet even more of our citizens. I think Andy said in the beginning that, you know, people walking up to you and the compliments that you get, that's what it's all about. And as many of you might know, it's not for the pay. City council does not get paid other than $300 a year, but that's not the point. The reward in doing this is what you hear from now, our tourists, our visitors, our families, the homes, the people's lives that we touch. And so thank you for the opportunity to serve, and I would love to continue on council.
Thank you, Susan. Andrew.
Once more, I'd like to thank the Greater Hamilton Chamber of Commerce, TV Hamilton, and Miami University Downtown, and those that are here tonight and watching on TV Hamilton. Thank you. A lot's been said tonight, and I can boil down my answers to all the questions like this. I am running for council because I want to serve. As I detailed in my opening statement, Hamilton has been good to my family and gave my parents a place to come, lay down roots, and have and grow a family. And now Hamilton has allowed me to meet my now-wife and lay down my own roots at Lindenwald with my own family. And now I want to give back to Hamilton and serve the residents as a member of city council. Hamilton, Ohio, just saying that fills my heart with gratitude, excitement, and pride. Gratitude for what Hamilton has given and provided me, excitement for Hamilton's future, and pride because Hamilton is my home and has always been my home. I want to see it thrive, grow, and be great for the next generation coming behind us. As member of council, I will be future-driven and resident-focused. Again, my name is Andrew Khan, and I'm asking for your vote for Hamilton City Council beginning this Wednesday, if you're voting early, or November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla.
So four years ago, when I ran for election, my one-man team, my husband Larry and I, collected all of our signs at the end of Election Day. And he called me and he said, "Okay, I've got mine. Are we taking them over to Marty Hinkle's to storm?" And I said, "Nope. I took mine to Bob Brown's. I threw them in the dumpster. I'm not running again." And so I threw all my signs away. Then, because I truly believed, you know, I'll be older, I'll be burnt out, there'll be a slew of people that want to run in place of me, but as the years, the four years went on and the 16 years added up, I realized that I think about our journey all the time, what we've accomplished and what lies ahead. And I do still want to be a part of that because I do still believe that I have a lot to offer with it, and I would appreciate if you would keep Carla on council. Thank you.
Thank you. The, oh, the first person I got to really thank is my wife sitting up front here, Tanya, and my son Evan, who support me a lot. Evan always wears his shirt when he's at Inside Out Studio working, and he's, I guess you kind of drive them crazy sometimes campaigning for me, but he's my campaign manager. So, you know, great support from my family during these last four years. I'm a lot to put up with at times, but I am passionate about what I do. I feel that Susan and I got kind of robbed the first two years. We get voted in, and it's COVID, right? We go to Lancaster, go look at Spooky Nook, and they shut it down right after we left. I thought it was something we did, but it was COVID. And so it took a little bit, you know, we, I feel we got kind of robbed like that, and I really would like to see some more time. But the growth of this city's been phenomenal. It's a pleasure to have been serving here last four years on council. Everybody on council has been super friendly. They help you. They, you know, they're a good team. They're not a good team, they're a great team. And I hope to continue service with Hamilton to further my vision with the city and the citizens. And again, I want to thank everyone that came here tonight. I appreciate you coming here, people on TV Hamilton. Thank you. I think it's real important for the citizens to get involved and make a decision. Please get out and vote. We need to get more voters out there. And I want to, you know, I just want to thank everybody that attended tonight and watched it, and I appreciate your vote to reelect Eric Pullman on November 7th, 2023. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Early voting starts this week, October 11th. You have plenty of opportunity to vote between October 11th and November 7th, which is the big election day. So thank you all for joining us tonight. Thank you who are watching, who want to be informed, the voters and the polls. Most of all, I want to thank our partners, Miami Downtown and TV Hamilton. But let's give a huge round of applause to the candidates who did an amazing job. Thank you.